So as soon as I say like, can we please let in Stephanie? And then they'll let you in and then they'll put you in as a speaker. Okay, thanks. Totally. How do I get out of this? Get out of it. Okay.
Amber, did you see Izzy?
Hey, there we go. Good evening, everyone.
Hello. Good evening.
The, all right. Great attendance this evening. Always love to see that. All right, councilors, I'm going to go ahead and get us started. Welcome, everyone, to the May 11th meeting of the Council of the City of Lancaster. Mr. Harris, would you be so kind as to call the role of members?
Absolutely, Mr. President. Mr. Royo.
Here.
Ms. Bakay.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Here.
And President Smith Wado.
Here. All right. Now we'll do approval of the minutes for the April 27th, 2021 meeting. I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Thank you, councilors Bakay and Soto. Council comments. Okay. Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakay.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith Wado.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Harris. So that brings us to proclamations, honors, awards, and resolutions of recognition. Pardon me, I'm going to ask for councils' forbearance to take these out of order. So we will start with Council Resolution Number 26. Mr. Harris?
Resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster condemning discrimination against Asians, Asian-Americans, and Pacific Islanders.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. This was discussed at our last committee meeting. Counselor Diaz?
Yes, Mr. President. We all know that the aftermath of the recent increase of the hate crimes and the bias incidents against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders. Many communicate, many communities are showing their support in various ways from social media activism to mutual aid efforts. And so this is why this resolution is brought forward to City Council in solidarity with our Asian community. And if it was, if it's okay with everyone, I'd like to bring Stephanie Sun. She is part of the AAPI of the Governor's Advisory. So if Amanda, there she is. Does she have to mute herself or do? Or does?
There we go.
Thank you, everyone. The assistant just gives me another choice to rejoin this meeting. Hi.
You have you, Stephanie. How are you?
Good. Thank you so much for having me here together with you and everyone. Thank you, Janet, and good evening, councilors and everyone on the line together with us. I'm Stephanie Sun. I serve as the Executive Director of Pennsylvania Governors Advisory Commission on Asian-Pacific and American Affairs. The commission is dedicated to ensuring that the Commonwealth's government is accessible and accountable to the diverse Asian-Pacific-American communities in the Commonwealth across the whole Pennsylvania. The commission is composed of around 30 Asian-Pacific-American committee leaders from diverse ethnic backgrounds and regions across Pennsylvania appointed by the governor. May now is the Asian-Pacific-American Heritage Month. I wanted to wish everyone a happy Asian-Pacific-American Heritage Month. And I wanted to say thank you to Councilwoman Jenny Diaz condemning discrimination and hate directed at Asian-American and Pacific Islanders in our community and affirming the Council of the City of Lancaster's commitment to combating racism and fostering an incredible and inclusive Lancaster. I really appreciate this resolution was introduced. This resolution definitely today adds more meaning to the Asian-Pacific-American Heritage Month during this crucial year in the Asian-Pacific-American community's history. As Governor Tom Wolf stated, "The tragic loss of six Asian-Americans in Georgia is just the latest example of rising tide of violence that Asian-Americans has experienced throughout the whole pandemic." Since the pandemic started last year, there has been an epic of incidents of harassment and discrimination targeting members of the Asian-American community due to the misinformation regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. This includes calling COVID-19 the China virus, the Wuhan virus, and Kung Flu virus, which wrongly tries to shift blame or accuse Asian-Americans for this pandemic. We heard from the community about the incidents of physical violence and verbal abuse. This happened when, when Asian community members walked down the street, happened when they're waiting in the line in front of the grocery stores, and happened in the trains when some people verbally and violently threatened them and forced them get off the train. Recently, in Pennsylvania, witnesses have reported more insidious forms of hate. This includes threatening statements of bodily harm against Asian-American students at high school classmates. And this also includes the casual use of the term COVID to name an American dish with Asian spices at the restaurant in Philadelphia. And we know many of, many more incidents have happened on the ground than the ones reported to the law enforcement. Governor Tom Wolf and our commission urge everyone to join him in standing in support with our Asian and Asian-American community to stop anti-Asian hate. On February 22nd, our commission, the Pennsylvania Governors Advisory Commission on Asian-Pacific and American Affairs issued a statement strongly condemning racial violence against Asian-Pacific-Americans, which was translated to 13 Asian languages. After the Georgia shooting on March 19th, together with the Governor Wolf and four other Pennsylvania commissions, we issued a joint statement in remembrance of lives lost and condemning Asian and Asian-American hate. Starting from the very early morning, right after the Georgia shooting, in the span of 10 days, we worked with Governor Wolf on pushing out four special messages through his social media on Stop Asian Hate. On March 26th, the Stop Asian Hate Virtual National Day of Action and Healing, Governor Wolf, together with 25 other governors, signed on a letter condemning anti-Asian acts of hate. And on March 24th, our commissioner, along with state representative, our commissioner, state representative Patty Kim, held a press conference together with her fellow state representatives in response to the Georgia shooting and showed solidarity with Asian-Pacific-American community and support anti-hate legislation. After the Georgia shooting, the Governors Commission on Asian-Pacific-American American Affairs co-organized three vigils remembering the Atlanta victims and condemning anti-Asian hate with local communities and local governments. In the Western PA, Pittsburgh, Central PA, Harrisburg, and Eastern PA, Montgomery County, which engaged more than 5,000 people in person and virtually. And in the past several weeks, we have been collaborating with diverse organizations in various regions across PA, more than 10 virtual town halls and panel discussions and multiple in-person rallies, and having many meetings with anti-Asian discrimination and violence engaging diverse community and stakeholders. And besides working with the community and government agencies to address this issue, we also try to promote racial equity and inclusiveness through the culture and education approach, promoting positive acceptance of Asian-Pacific-American community through schools, teachers, and students. Our commission has creating an Asian-Pacific Culture Educational Resource Package for schools and educators, starting with the Lunar New Year, which was celebrated by more than half of the APA residents in PA. Besides working with the, working with the school, and we also organized a series of the events and activities throughout the whole month of May to celebrate the identity and heritage of Asian-Pacific-American community and engage with diverse non-Asian-Pacific communities. In addition, our commission is also working on two other new projects to address the hate crime and discrimination. One is to set up a PA Anti-Asian Hate Crimes and Discrimination Database, collaborating with our community partners by collecting data and stories from the community, providing resource and producing, and producing regular reports for government agencies and communities. We hope to utilize the report and datas to work on structural reform, resource equity, and accessibility. And the other project is to building, is to build a statewide directory of resource, government agencies, and community organizations providing services and support on combating hate crimes and discrimination. We will share the directory with everyone. For social justice and humanity, we call for all Pennsylvanians to stand up against anti-Asian hate and racism in all forms. Hate has no place in Pennsylvania. We appreciate, for the first time in the history, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners acknowledged the Asian-Pacific-American Heritage Month of May with a proclamation last week on May 5th. And we also greatly appreciate that this resolution is introduced. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see Adam Hosey is also present. Mr. Hosey, would you like to speak?
Yeah, good evening, councilors in Lancaster City. My name is Adam Hosey. I'm an abolitionist educator and Korean immigrant. I wanted to thank you for this important and well-worded resolution introduced by Counselor Diaz. Our Pan-Asian experience in America has always been marred by racism and white supremacy, and our community appreciates this acknowledgement. This statement is an important step towards dismantling systemic racism in our institutions and communities, and we're looking forward to working in solidarity with other groups in what Fred Hampton might call our Rainbow Coalition for the benefit of all people. Just like other Black, Brown, and Indigenous communities, Asians in Lancaster are not defined by our oppression. We are not a monolith, and we are not your model minority. There is an infinite variety of Asian experiences right here in our backyards. And while we are a tough shell to crack sometimes, I do encourage the city to go out of their way to bring these unheard voices to the table. In virtually every fight for justice in this country, we've seen Asians walking in solidarity with others. We were in on the fight for suffrage and civil rights. We were in the streets after the murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Ricardo Munoz. We will continue to fight to send dismantled white supremacy in ourselves and for all people, because as James Baldwin wrote to Angela Davis, "If they take you in the morning, they're going to be coming for us at night." So I want to thank you again for the statement allowing me to speak. I want to close by acknowledging the immense public health work that managed Junjualala and the South Asian Association of Lancaster doing with their vaccine clinics, and invite you all to a vigil and rally planned by freshly graduated from college Julia Cow on Saturday at 6:00 PM at Penn Square to show support and solidarity for our Pan-Asian community. And there will be stickers. So thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Hosey.
And that is forwarded to you, President Ishmael. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Diaz. Thank you again, Ms. Sun, Mr. Hosey. Are there other council comments on the resolution? Are there other comments from the public? All right. Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakay.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith Wado.
Aye. We are very proud to have passed this resolution, and thank you so much for coming to speak with us today. And thank you, Counselor Diaz, for passing this important resolution. Mr. Harris, would you be so kind as to prepare a copy of the ordinance to be sent to the Governor's Commission?
I can do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Counselor Diaz, and thank you so much, everyone.
Take care.
I said ordinance when I, when I meant resolution, but just the same. Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right. That moves us to Council Resolution Number 25, 2021. Mr. Harris?
Resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster urging adoption of Governor Wolf's 2021 education budget and fair and equitable funding for Pennsylvania's public school districts.
All right. I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. This is.
Sorry, who is the second?
Counselor Bakay.
I'm sorry.
This is an extremely important resolution that we have ahead of us right now. As we all know, fair funding is crucial to this community and communities around the Commonwealth. Counselor Diaz, take it away.
Um, well, I think everybody has seen how crucial it is for us to continue fighting for fair funding for our schools, especially for the schools that are predominantly students of color and living in poverty areas. I would also say that even in the county and certain areas in our county, we do have disparity also with funding because they're not getting it and because I've seen it firsthand. So it's important us to continue fighting. And of course, I'm going to give it back to you because I know we have a large amount of people that would like to talk about it.
Wonderful. Well, we, we welcome it. I'm going to start with any other councilors who would like to address the resolution. Council comments? Okay. If you are a member of the public and you would like to comment on the resolution before us, you can go ahead and click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. All right. Let's start with Jason Perkowski, Ms. Strazo.
Hello. Just want to double check. Can you hear me, Dan?
Jason, we can hear you.
Hello. So thank you very much for letting me speak to this resolution, and thank you very much for doing the work of bringing this forward. We are so grateful to each of you as the councilors that have moved this forward for consideration this evening. My name is Reverend Jason Perkowski and the pastor at Faith and Oregon Community United Methodist Churches. I speak tonight on behalf of Power Interfaith of Lancaster County, where a combination of 20-plus congregations, interfaith congregations, from Jewish to Christian, you churches have gathered together, and we've been working on fair funding as an organization since 2015. As most of you probably know, there's an old funding structure that has just been archived into the system for years. And when we analyzed the data, what we discovered is that students that are in schools that are predominantly Black and Brown are underfunded disproportionately compared to predominantly white schools. A lot of that is because of inequities that were simply built into old funding structures that they didn't take into account the number of students that were in the district as the number of students dropped in certain districts but increased in others. They didn't take into account the capacity for a district to be able to raise their own funds locally, the poverty in the district, the number of English language learners. Race, of course, played into this because of white flight that both pulled people out of the district by redlining practices and pulled businesses out of the district and made it harder for districts to be able to raise the funding that they needed. We know that every student deserves state funding support shared across the Commonwealth because we are a Commonwealth. We know that a rising tide raises all ships. The more we support our students, the better we can help them thrive. That's good for them, the families that they'll raise. That's good for the businesses that they'll work for, the businesses that they'll begin if they're fully equipped for all the things that the future will hold for them by the education that we provide today. The more we can help students thrive today, the less they'll need help with remediation in the future through the penal system, through rehabilitation, things from drug rehab, the more, the less support they'll need from unemployment because they'll be able to thrive using the skills that God gave them, and they'll be able to become the persons that they were intended to be. All Pennsylvania schools would benefit by maintaining or raising funding levels if we pass this resolution, and we keep passing resolutions like this across the Commonwealth, and eventually we get the Commonwealth themselves to pass it. Every school would either maintain the same level or see it increase. That means more AP classes, college and high school classes, or special ed and gifted classes, laptops to deal with COVID or other reasons why a student might leave, learn from home, more guidance counselors, social workers, career counselors. Every student would benefit from this if we pass it. And so I encourage you to be the second city council to pass this in the Commonwealth. You know, Lancaster has an opportunity to make a bold stand that way. This is good for every, every school. 15 out of 18 districts in Lancaster County alone would see their funding increase. None of the school districts would see their funding decrease. This is a win for all of us, and I appreciate you looking at this, and I pray that you pass it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Also, I should compliment you on your mastery of the clock. You brought it exactly to time. And of course, we appreciate your, your contribution as well. Thank you for taking the opportunity to speak on this. Ms. Strazo, let's add Rachel Moltz to the meeting.
Good afternoon. Good evening. Sorry. Good evening, council members. I'm Rachel Moltz. I'm the lead pastor at Akron-Mennonite Church of Akron, Pennsylvania. This evening, I speak representing Power Interfaith Lancaster County as well. Jason is a colleague of mine, and you heard from many of our colleagues last, two weeks ago, at the last meeting. Power Interfaith Lancaster County is a group of local faith leaders and congregations, including seven congregations from Lancaster City as well as others from the surrounding county. I urge you as Lancaster City Council to adopt this resolution, which Councilmember Diaz has introduced. The children of this city and the entire county need you to adopt this resolution because every child in this city, in this county, and in this state deserves the highest quality education regardless of race, to be empowered to live into their highest potential, strengthening our community for the benefit of all. I moved to Lancaster County from the Midwest in the summer of 2016, and in late 2017, I learned through David Masenkas' research and data analysis about the racial disparities of public school funding in the distribution of state education dollars here in Pennsylvania. I was appalled that Pennsylvania has the most racially unjust system of state funding for public schools. And so I just want to say that Governor Wolf's proposal state budget would distribute all of the current basic funding, education funding through the Fair Funding Formula to correct the racial inequity that exists in our current practice. And I urge you to support this proposed education budget because we know that the strength of our community lies in the education of all of our children. The strength of Lancaster City relies on the realized potential of all its citizens, and the strength of this county is supported by the strength of this city. So imagine what the teachers and administrators of the School District of Lancaster could do with an increased budget of $19.1 million in funding. They are already doing so much for the children in the city, but they could do so much more. So I would thank you for your consideration to pass this resolution.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Your comments are much appreciated. Ms. Strazo, please add Reverend Bailey to the meeting.
I want to thank you tonight for allowing us at Power to be a part of your council meeting, and I want to thank you beforehand for passing the resolution that you are planning on adopting tonight. Education is so important, and it's amazing to me that since 1954, the Brown versus Board of Education, we have still been arguing about educating all of our children. It's amazing that in America, we still don't understand what made us the leading nation was the fact that public schools were educating children. Now, in the 50s, many of the schools were segregated and separated, and yet we were educating people to be doctors and lawyers and all of the kind of institutions, especially in the Black schools. They were even teaching languages that were around the world, not only African language, but European languages, and some even dabbled in Chinese. And children were taken, when they graduated, they were going to college, mainly Black colleges, but they were being educated. Now, we're finding out, years later, that the educational system is letting down the children of America, especially those who are Black and those who are Brown, being, instead of being educated or being kicked out of school, not finishing school, edge of school, and being deemed uneducable. And with this power, what power is trying to do now in support of the governor's funding proposition is to try to make education fair again. Without educating our young people, especially children in the Black community, America's at a loss because it wasn't just one cultural group that invented all the inventions, discovered all the discoveries, nor was a prominent in medicine. And somehow, because people don't know the history of America, that's missing. So your resolution tonight will help Pennsylvania and the governor be able to find other support and let people know just how important this fair funding issue is. So I congratulate you tonight for taking the first step on doing this. As someone said earlier, you're the second city council to even entertain this, and I think you're doing a great job by taking on this resolution, and I support what you're doing, and I thank God for you to be supporting us. Bless you all.
Thank you very much, Reverend Bailey. Ms. Strazo, would you please add Mary Ann Smith to the meeting?
Hi.
Hi, this is Mary Ann. My statement's going to be very short, but I am a parent in the school district of Lancaster and a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Lancaster. And I just want to thank you for taking up this resolution and I'm supportive. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. We appreciate it.
Bye.
Ms. Strazo, please add Faith Dear Bono to the meeting.
Thank you very much. So I am an Episcopal priest, St. John's Episcopal Church, and I attend Lancaster Friends Meeting. And as people have said already, that across the straight state, there's clear data that the larger a school district's minority population, the smaller its state allocation per student is likely to be. And in that current system, majority non-white schools receive almost certainly an education of lower quality than their peers of at a majority white school can afford. So the system not only does not work for equality, it serves to entrench, entrench class and race inequities further. So the solution is this year, right now, in the governor's proposed budget, that would include fair funding. So I want to thank Lancaster City Council and its membership for not only naming this need for equity, but also for moving ahead for action. And I thank you in advance.
Thank you. Ms. Strazo.
Hello. Tony Dash, 700 Block, the New Holland Avenue. I'm just going to reiterate thanks that I have given in the past for putting this forward and approving it. And I think it's actually good to note that you guys are the second city council to approve this. Because there is definitely going to be work to be done towards getting other municipalities to approve this as well, including those municipalities that maybe receive too much of a share of the funds and hopefully will recognize that we need to distribute these more equitably. And I think the logical next choice to approach about this is Lancaster Township because they are a governing body that overlaps school district Lancaster with us. And we definitely want to demonstrate unity as a school district on this. So whatever we can do to make that happen as well, I appreciate. But again, thank you guys for approving that. Well, I'm assuming you guys are about to approve this. Maybe I'm jumping the gun a little bit, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dash. All right, not, not hearing any other public comments. I will note that it was powerful to me that Brown versus Board of Education was mentioned as, with a, with a combination of unwelcome policy and indeed white flight from urban school districts, we find ourselves returning to separate and unequal public education. Something that ostensibly was solved by the Supreme Court of the United States in the previous century. And so while we may be the second city council to take this up, unfortunately, it seems that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania may be as much as 70 years behind in terms of where we should, how we should be supporting public education. So with that, Mr. Harris, would you please call the vote?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royal.
Hi.
Ms. Bacon.
Hi.
Ms. Craig.
Hi.
Ms. Diaz.
Hi.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Hi.
Mr. Soto.
Hi.
President Smith-Weidel.
Hi. Thank you all very much. Thank you, in particular, Counselor Diaz. And this is a great opportunity to, pardon me, I don't know that they're watching, they may be busy, but just to say thank you to the teachers and the school board of the district of Lancaster. If you can check in the chat, there is a post about fair funding on the city's Facebook page. And I'm, I am certain that the Lancaster Township Board of Supervisors, if they are not already acting on this, would, would support such an action. But we have the rest of an agenda to move on to, so I will move us along, giving everyone my thanks. That brings us to our first public comment period, reserved for those persons who have contacted Mr. Harris prior to the meeting to request the opportunity to speak. Of course, comments are three minutes in length. Mr. Harris, do we have any tonight?
We do, Mr. President. We have one from Frank Byrne.
All right.
Hello.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Byrne. Welcome to our city council meeting.
Thank you very much. I am, I reside at 240 East Marion Street, located just outside Musser Park, opposite the playground.
Yes.
Need this evening to protest the role of the city of Lancaster, Lancaster compost co-ops, and anyone else responsible for placing a large crate-like compost bin right next to the park's playground. More importantly, my hope, which is shared by other park neighbors, is to remove it from the park for the good of the community and the park. I have several complaints for you to consider. First is the technicality, I mean technically legal taking of precious space from Musser Park, which as you know is an urban park. It is a green oasis, also known as the green heart of Lancaster. Without going to the dictionary, a public park serves as a place of relaxation and enjoyment for everyone. Its ambience should be conducive to those ends. Unfortunately, but naturally, park space has long been coveted by special interest groups, individuals, and even municipalities themselves for projects unrelated to the park's primary purposes. I'll begin with some recent history. Back exactly five years ago, the city of Lancaster proposed a building in Musser Park for, an equipment station for their broadband, was a switching station. I was president of the Musser Park Civic Association at the time, and I protested it vigorously with emails, letters to the editor, and letters to City Hall and whatnot. And they eventually relented. And what they, after saying, oh, they could do nothing else but have it there, and then it must be there. Well, you know what they came up with? They, they reduced the station size so that it would fit into a metal box the size of a traffic, traffic light control box that can be hung on a lamppost outside the park, which they did. Let me be clear, I am a supporter of worthy environmentalist causes, including composting. Perplexingly, however, environmentalists sometimes lose sight of their own big picture by committing themselves to a single environmental goal. Unwittingly or not, they develop tunnel vision, preventing even a peripheral view of other environmental issues. A park is simply a park, not an outdoor factory, a farm, or anything else. The city owns the park and the compost bin sponsors want a home for its project. The sponsors go to the city with their plan without any public notice. The bulky crate suddenly appears in the park. My neighbors and I wonder what it is and why they were not, we were not forewarned. Later on, we learn the sponsors of the compost, composter had already reached out to the Musser Park Civic Association in an effort to gain public support. Since the Musser Park Civic Association has no authority to speak for anyone but members of its own organization, the bin's advocates failed to fulfill an important requirement.
Mr. Byrne.
Public notice, reaching out to the community and telling them about their plans and asking for their opinion. And, and so, look, I know I'm over.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. I, I appreciate your comments and I appreciate you taking the time to share them with us.
I know you don't have the, I'm over my, what I would like to do is can I write up a brief and submit it to you that has some other things about alternatives and whatnot? I feel I'm passionate about this thing.
Yes, Mr. Byrne, you can send an email to, sorry, to bharris@cityoflancasterpa.com. That's the council clerk, Mr. Harris, and he will share it with me.
All right. Thank you for your attention and I don't know, maybe this belongs on the council's agenda or future date. My, my problem is this is a fait accompli and it should never be that, that way. We live in a democracy, as you, all of you well know. All right, I'm sorry I took up so much of your time.
You're okay, Mr. Byrne. We just, we try to keep it in, in three minutes.
Okay. I apologize and thank you very much.
No need to apologize. Have a good day, Mr. Byrne. Mr. Harris, do we have any other public comments?
We do not, Mr. President.
Okay. Give me just a second. I misplaced my agenda. That brings us to reports requested by council. Do we have any, Mr. Harris?
We do not, Mr. President.
Thank you. That brings us to reports of committees of council from the May 3 committee meeting. We'll begin with the Public Safety Committee. Counselor Garcia Melina.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee meeting did meet. We had one agenda item, which was Administration Bill Number 122021, which amends a civil service ordinance. The proposed change for this ordinance standardizes provisions across the police and fire bureaus. So the changes are intended to advance individuals who exemplify the city's core values and beliefs. The revised hiring process includes a rural, oral and written examination. Currently, the oral exam does not count towards police recruiting scoring. The oral exam will also happen before in the process. Normally, it happens after the background checks, but now it's meant to happen beforehand. The biggest part of the amendment change really is related to seniority points for promotion. With policing, it's not going to change. It's going to follow the existing ordinance. But within the fire bureau, it will align with the police recognition of seniority. That is going to be on the May 25th for the first reading, and that was the only thing on our agenda, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Garcia Melina. All right, next we have the Public Works Committee. Counselor Soto.
Thank you, Council President. The Public Works Committee did meet on May 3. There was one item on the agenda, Administration Resolution Number 282021, authorizing for the application for a state grant for the Long's Park Wetland Walk. The bills, the request will be for 250,000. Requested to the Commonwealth Finance Authority will provide funding for education signage along the walkways planned for the northern edge of Long's Park. This is being done in conjunction with 1.1 million dollar stormwater mitigation project being done in the park. A stormwater project where there's flooding issues and mosquitoes from standing water in the areas. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Soto. All right, next we have the Economic Development Committee. Counselor Oreo.
Thank you, Council President. We did not meet during the last committee meeting.
Thank you. That brings us to finance. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Council President. The finance committee did meet on the Monday, May 3 committee meeting. We heard a report of the preliminary financial results for 2020 presented by Patrick Hopkins. Mr. Hopkins presented those results and also noted that we will, of course, get a full audited result around August. We can expect to receive that. Some of the highlights of the report include overall losses in revenue in 2020 were not as significant as we expected. The city received CARES Act funding, of course, and there were many cost-saving measures taken. Rather than using nearly $3 million in reserve funds as the budget originally called for, the city ended up using only $141,000 from its reserves. Other real estate taxes were down less than 1%, which was unexpected through COVID. Earned income taxes were down 2%. Local services taxes were down 11%. Parking violations were down nearly 17%. However, real estate transfer taxes exceeded budget by 22.5% and building and permit revenue exceeded budget by 11.5%. Savings and expenses came primarily from a $1.4 million reduction in salaries due to furloughs and the hiring freeze. It's important to note that city employees were able to maintain their benefits while furloughed. Nearly $1.6 million reduction came in operating expenses, which was primarily due to deferred projects. Due to those savings, the city ended the year with about $15.3 million in the, in the reserves or about 25% of our general fund budget. It's a much better position than we had anticipated and will help ensure the city has, maintains its positive A3 bond rating and puts the city in a better position for this year, 2021. Also to note, the enterprise funds, the sewer fund budget ended the year with a $1.1 million surplus due to decreased demand. The water fund, which was budgeted to have a $1.7 million shortfall in 2020, ended the year with a $191,000 shortfall. The stormwater management fund was also budgeted to end the year with a $112,000 user reserves. Instead, it ended up with a $320,000 surplus. The solid waste and recycling fund was also budgeted to use 355,000 in reserve funds during the year and ended up with a small surplus of 14 and a half thousand dollars. And that concludes my report. No action was taken.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bacon. Good news. Next, the Community Planning Committee. Counselor Craig.
Thank you, Council President. The community planning did meet on May 3. We had two items on the agenda, one of which was, we were presented with the review of the Historical Commission Recommendation of Denial for 437 West Grant Street and Administration Resolution Number 272021, a balcony easement for Landis Place on King, both of which will come up on our legislative agenda this evening.
Thank you, Counselor Craig. Last but not least, we have the Personnel Committee. Counselor Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. President. We actually did not meet, so we did not have anything in the agenda for today.
Thank you very much, Counselor Diaz. All right, I believe that brings us to our legislative agenda. We begin with Heritage Conservation District Matters. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. We have one for this evening. Considering the following application recommendation from the Historical Commission for improvements to a property in the Heritage Conservation District, and that is Stonecrest Builders, owner of 437 West Grant Street, proposed construction of a two-story rooftop addition to an existing two-story brick warehouse. And that application was recommended for denial by the Historical Commission.
I, I will hear a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, and so just for clarity, the motion is to approve the recommendation of the Historical Commission, which would be to deny the application. Counselor Craig.
Thank you, Council President. On April 19, the Historical Commission met and on May 3 presented council with all the details of that meeting. Council also was given the presentation by the developers. The Historical Commission has recommended denial. The proposed new addition continues to be inappropriate to the form and scale of this significant former tobacco warehouse. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you. Is there any, any council comments on, sorry, we'll brain fart there. Any council comments on the recommendation? Is there anyone from the public or representative of the city or the applicant present to address the item? Oh, there we go. All right, we'll begin, I believe that's Mr. Um, all right, we'll begin. I believe that's Mr. Ben Newell Esch. We'll add him to the meeting first, as he has a direct relevance to, to the matter at hand. Mr. Esch, good evening.
Good evening. I was expecting Peter Karikaito to be on the call with us, our engineer. Do you see him anywhere?
He is. Ms. Strazo, would you please add Mr. Karikaito to the meeting? Peter, can you hear us?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can. Gentlemen, please go ahead.
All right. Do we have an opportunity to share screens and, and walk through it?
Uh, yes, that's fine.
Yeah, I think I'll have, I'll have to re-add you as a panelist. Hold on just a second.
Okay.
All right, I think that was successful.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay. Now, I assume I have the opportunity to run through. I don't want to be redundant and repeat anything from last week's meeting, but.
Mr. Karikaito, yes, of course, the, the general preference is for brevity, but as you know, the committee meeting last, last week, which you attended, was a vote of that committee, and now you are before the entirety of, of council, at least for specific consideration. So please go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so the property in question is 437 West Grant Street. Mr. Esch purchased the property last year with the intention of, of redeveloping for residential use. It is Zoned R4. The current building is about two-story, two stories with a basement below, about 4,000 square foot footprint. The images shown are existing conditions from West Grant Street. A little bit further to the east on West Grant Street. And these floor plans represent, site plans give you some context of the surrounding streets. The highlighted lines represent the property boundaries. So the image to the right here is illustrating the existing footprint in lighter gray with the proposed stair and elevator additions on the north and west facades in black. The reason those are additions in order to obtain the required parking for residential, we, our design is proposing the parking within the basement level, residential use on the existing two floors above that, and then proposed construction of two stories above for a total of seven condominium units with access to a rooftop and green roof to improve stormwater retention. So we were tasked with the challenge of introducing these two stories to the new stories to the existing two-story structure, which of course is on the National Register of Historic Places in a way that would not overpower or challenge the character of the building too much. So now I'll walk through some images. This is on the, to the east side on Grant, looking to the west. It's a photo representing the existing conditions and a rendering illustrating our proposed design as seen from West Grant Street. Again, intentionally using light colors and setting the building back a full structural bay of 12 feet, I'm sorry, eight feet set back from the south facade to really isolate the building and separate it from that scale of the, of the existing street front. In moving to the west, looking back to the east, again, here are our existing conditions of the building and our proposed design. So clearly, the view from the west introduces a much larger scale that is not inconspicuous in any way from this side. But I believe we were successful in achieving a design that still reveals the proportions, scale, character of the original building. In other words, we're still revealing the corners, so you can see the entire west facade and the southern facade remains as is. And this slide was put together really to illustrate that, that the frame of view at, at the street level from the public way is still intact and still preserves that character and gives a sense of scale of what that building was, while introducing the improvement of using what is currently an unused vacant building. And in many ways, in my opinion, improving the experience and environment of that built surrounding over what is visible today. So in my opinion, I think we were successful in striking that balance of preservation, although it might not meet the Secretary of Interior's guidelines to a T. I, I think we managed to achieve most of their goals while still introducing what I see as, as an improvement to the community. And on that, Benuel, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think there's a few things that are fair to add there. Is anyone from the Historic Commission on this call that we can have a discussion here, or should I just go for it?
So you're, Mr. Esch, in this instance, you're presenting to us as a body, so please just go ahead.
Sure, sure. Yeah, so the core issues that we've gotten from Historic are essentially, so since it's an individually registered building, it carries more weight with them than it typically would. They actually indicated at one point if we could have it removed from that register, they'd be much more prone to approve the project. And the other one was just the height of it. A point was made that it's, you know, one of the higher buildings in the neighborhood and would be obtrusive because of that. So I'd like to speak a bit to both of those points. As for being one of the higher buildings in the neighborhood, that is partially incorrect. It's similar in height to 317 North Mulberry Street condos there. It's similar to the new fire hall that's directly across the alley from it. Then there's Landis Place on King that's coming in that will be significantly higher. So I think that largely is a moot point. And then as for it being a register, register on the, it being a registered building, that I've come to view largely as, well, so we're adding a really nice product to the city that, to Mayor Sarachi's point in last week's call, provides much-needed housing. And this will add a significant amount to the tax roll, so reducing some of the upward pressure, helping to reduce the upward pressure in that in the community. So I've kind of almost come to the conclusion as we're going through this and talking through all this with Historic, that it's, I mean, somewhere along the line, a decision has to be made of, well, you know, do we continue with the thought process of, you know, do we, do we not do this project because of, you know, registration that was filed in 1990 versus looking at forward progress for the city? So those are some of the key points I'd like to make. Let me just check my notes. If there's anything else that's crucial there. Yeah, that's really the crux of our argument and why, you know, I think it should go forward despite the Historic Council's recommendation. I'd like to.
One thing I felt to mention is that it is within zoning regulations. We did obtain special exception to exceed a few feet in height for the elevator shaft in order to maintain access to the rooftop. Aside from that, R4 zoning allows a building of this size and scale in that neighborhood.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Esch. Thank you, Mr. Karikaito. Appreciate your time in presenting this to us. Counselors, is this visual helpful to you, or shall I ask Mr. Karikaito to unshare his screen?
Council President, I think we can unshare.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Karikaito.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there any representative of the city or the Historical Commission with us tonight? I'm not, I don't believe that there is. Right. Oh, there we go. Mr. Smith, good evening.
Hi, good evening, counselors. Good evening, Council President. Happy to answer any questions that you might have on this project this evening. I am the representative for the city on behalf of this project. Mr. Funk did speak to you all last week on behalf of the Historical Commission, as did Suzanne Stallings. I believe that you have their, the recommendations and the commentary from them. Happy to speak to clarifications if you have any. But otherwise, you know, the recommendation is as, as rendered, and I'm not sure that I have much to add at this point.
Counselor Craig, it remains your show for the moment.
Okay, thank you. Douglas, I do have one question. Mr. Benel, if I said that correctly, referred to the historic registry being made in 1990 and something to the fact that if the building could be removed or something to that effect, could you enlighten me just a little bit to what he said? You know, can it be removed? I mean, is it just that simple to be removed?
So, thank you for your question, Counselor, and I'll, I'll try my best to speak to that. So whether the building is on the, is listed singularly on the National Register or not, it is still within the Heritage Conservation District. There are many buildings throughout the city in the Heritage Conservation District that are not individually listed and would still be required to be reviewed by the Historical Commission and to be consistent with the guidelines. If it were removed from the district overall, the National Registered District, that would be another matter. I don't think that that has ever happened in the city of Lancaster. The National Registered District covers most of the four square miles of the historic area and fabric of the city. And this certainly has protected numerous important buildings throughout the city as a result. I know that delisting a building is difficult to do, and oftentimes that might be, that might occur because of some sort of significant damage to a building.
Thank you, Douglas. Are there any other questions from, from council? Questions from the public? I do, okay, there's Mr. Dastre.
There I am. Thank you. Hello, how's everyone doing?
Great.
Tony Dastre, 700 block of New Holland Avenue. So I have a lot of frustrations about this, but I think what I'm going to change my mind to speak about instead is definitely what, the point that seems to be getting hit is the much-needed need for housing and the amount of unused space that this is. It's absolutely true. We, there are plenty of people in this city who need housing. Those people are often labeled as homeless. I would argue that Lancaster City is their home, and we need to be doing more to secure their security as opposed to building condos as such. I have a severe anxiety about the price point that has been mentioned, which I believe was half a million dollars for each of the lower-story condos and $1 million for the top-story condo. Again, reiterating that this building was purchased for $1 million, and I believe that that's in part because of the rampant speculation in the market and people just being able to purchase properties as such without much community regard being considered. There are condos available on Prince Street for less, like considerably less, that hundreds of thousands of dollars of less at that price point. I do not understand what gives Mr. Esch the confidence in his ability to sell these condo units, and that's concerning, but also I'm concerned that we're building seven units of housing when it's absolutely true. This is a unused structure right now, and as opposed to letting seven condo units being built and driving up the land values of the area, which yes, would be good for property taxes. However, if we're not considering who needs housing and how we're going to take care of them, we are doing more damage in the long run. And we're just building fancy buildings that increase property value for what? Money. And how much does a dollar cost, I guess, is my point. So I would like to know what gives the developer in this situation the confidence that these, that this building and these units are going to sell, and furthermore, I want to know why we're building seven units as opposed to maybe, I don't know what the square footage of each of these units is, but I think that the zoning allows for, I believe, 400 square foot for an efficiency apartment. I'd love to see as many efficiencies here as possible to increase the density as opposed to having seven spaced-out units at a very high price point, which definitely will not help us service the people of the community who desperately need help. Thank you for your time, and I would like an answer to that question as to what gives the confidence.
Thank you, Mr. Dastre. If one, one of you would like to address Tony's question, then we'll move forward.
Yeah, I'm happy to address it. So the first one seems to be what gives us the confidence that we can sell at the price points we've mentioned. That is simple data. I am a Realtor in the city. I have sold a fair bit of this type of product and have seen a good bit of comparable properties sell in the last year or two, and that market's only gone up that I believe, you know, selling at the price points we're looking at will not be an issue. The second point to make, and Tony, we did look at the possibility of having this be an apartment complex at a much lower income level. However, zoning simply does not allow for that here. We could apply it, and that's simply a parking issue. Zoning in the R4 district requires at least two parking spaces, no, hold on, I'm sorry, one parking space per condo or apartment, and the maximum that's possible with this project is probably going to be seven, certainly not 14, certainly not 21 or anything like that number. So that was how we arrived at this being the highest best use for the project.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from the public? I don't see anybody else out there waiting. No?
No, not seeing any.
Thank you. Council President, that is all I have. You're muted.
Thank you, Counselor Craig. Thank you, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Karikaito and Mr. Esch for your time today. Hearing and seeing no additional comments, Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Orio.
Hi.
Ms. Bakke.
Hi.
Ms. Craig.
Hi.
Ms. Diaz.
Hi.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Hi.
Mr. Soto.
Hi.
President Smith-Wadeell.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
A moment. My apologies at all. I believe that brings us to the resolutions portion of our agenda, beginning with Administration Resolution Number 272021.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster approving an easement agreement between the City of Lancaster and Landis Quality Living, granting an easement to Landis or encroachment onto the public right-of-way over West Grant Street as more fully set forth in the easement agreement.
Motion approved.
Bakke?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Counselor Craig.
Thank you. This is for the Landis Place on King at 239 West King Street. The building will have a certain feature, including balconies at level four. The building will have a certain feature, including balconies at level four and six and, and roof projections at level six, which will extend 3.89 feet over and into the public right of way of West Grant Street. That is all I have on that. What I, if there's someone here to speak to, and I do have one question.
Counselor Craig, I'm happy to speak to it, but I also see Ed Kaminsky and Brett have their hand raised.
Okay, if we could let them in, Amber, because maybe they, maybe might answer questions for someone else. In Douglas, in the meantime, have, had the developers met all the requirements that were asked of them?
So this plan was conditionally approved last week by the Planning Commission. I believe there were nine conditions that were outlined. A number of them have actually already been met, and we anticipate that all of them will be resolved actually in the next couple of weeks. They're asking for the plan to be signed and released by early June. And so from a, from a land development perspective, there are no major obstacles from what I can see. Regarding this architectural easement, the Planning Commission didn't have any issue with it. It's shown on the approved plan. The city engineer also reviewed it extensively with me and the city solicitor, who provided a revised easement agreement, and Landis Communities agreed to that revised agreement.
Thank you, Douglas. That answers my question. Are there any further questions from council? Any further questions from the public?
There doesn't appear to be one, Counselor Craig.
Rob Corin.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm here with the applicant here on behalf of.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else. Okay, that's it. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Counselor Craig. Seeing and hearing no other comments or questions. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royal.
Hi.
Ms. Beckett.
Hi.
Ms. Craig.
Hi.
Ms. Diaz.
Hi.
Mr. Garcia Malina. Mr. Soto.
Hi.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Hi.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. President, counselors all. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Council President, that concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Craig. I believe that brings us to Administration Resolution Number 282021. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster requesting a greenways, trails and recreation program grant for $250,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Longs Park Wetland Walk.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Counselor Soto.
I don't have anything other to add than what I said earlier other to the fact that there is no matching grant with this grant application. There is no matching funds to be looked for, I should say. And Mr. Campbell, do you have anything other to add?
Just a little bit. As, as always, Counselor Soto, you're very complete in how you present the, the project. The way that it was described earlier in the, in the meeting is accurate. This is one of those rare opportunities where, while the City of Lancaster is doing the, the right thing and providing a stormwater management program, which is already currently fully funded at $1.1 million to support stormwater management in the north, northern corner of Longs Park, which also supports part of Park City, the water that comes through from Park City. It's also an opportunity for funding to be made available so that the people of the city and the people who use the park can actually not only experience a better and an enhanced environment where the stormwater is managed, but have a better understanding of that, of the nature of stormwater management. So there are, there would be opportunities for a number of, of trees to be planted and shrubbery and some landscaping, as well as pedestrian bridges that, that walk over the stormwater management green infrastructure, as well as educational elements, placards and informational signage that lets people have a better understanding of what are those things doing. This, in fact, is a site which is, is writ large, a much larger version of many of the green infrastructure interventions that you see on many of these streets throughout the city of Lancaster, on Charlotte, Charlotte Street, on Mulberry, et cetera, et cetera. And this is a great opportunity in one of our great parks, Longs Park, to be able to see it, understand it and see it in action all, all year round. So as, as Counselor Soto says, there is no matching funds required for this. This would be an out and out grant from Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for greenways, trails and recreation. And it'd be an opportunity, I think, for us to continue our leadership role in green infrastructure and stormwater management, not just in this region, but throughout the country.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. And Council President, that's all I have at this point. Are there any questions from the rest of council or?
Counselor Soto, I do have one quick question.
Certainly.
So, Mr. Campbell, if I'm hearing you correctly, I'm hearing you say that Longs Park is, with this grant approval, will have an opportunity to be an educate, an environmental educational park that will inform people as to some of the things that they're seeing throughout the city, but they'll be seeing it in the park, but be able to recognize it outside of the park.
That is exactly right. This is one of the wonderful things that I'm hoping we all start to understand better is that green infrastructure, the stormwater management systems are scalable, that they are interpreted and presentable and, and put into effect in a variety of different ways, in a variety of different situations. This is on a much grander scale because of the volume that it has to, of water that it has to manage. This is not just a rivulette or a, a storm water situation in the curb of your street. This is larger volumes of water that are coming in that particular part of the park as well as coming from under Route 30 from Park City. So one can see on a much grander scale how the natural environment, how the four bay system, how the, the greenery and et cetera helps to clean the water, filter the water and be able to see it graphically, physically and have it demonstrated didactically or as a learning opportunity at, for any age, whether it's children or adults.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Are there any other questions from the council? Do we have any questions from the public? Are there any hands up or anything? Okay, Council President, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Soto. Hearing and seeing no other comments, Mr. Harris.
Mr. President, there is one hand up.
I'm sorry. Oh, there we go. Ms. Strazo, please add Mr. Dastre to the meeting.
Tony Dastre, 700 block of New Holland Avenue. I just wanted to thank you guys for this project, actually. I think that, Mr. Campbell, your point about scaling stormwater systems is hugely relevant. And I do think sometimes we forget that Longs Park and Park City, like not we, everyone here, but like we as a city, as a community, because they're part of the annexes, it's, it, it seems so unrelatable, but I'm glad that we are taking the opportunity to improve these things. I hope that this project can potentially spur inspiration for those big giant parking lots that go vastly unused at Park City right now. And I'm glad to know that we're preserving the pedestrian connection underneath Route 30 because I do see a future where that's going to be hugely relevant. So thank you guys for this project. I'm glad to see that we're getting a little creative about how we're going to educate the public with stormwater. And I'm looking forward to seeing it completed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dastre. We really appreciate that.
All right. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Sorry. Mr. Royal.
Hi.
Ms. Beckett.
Hi.
Ms. Craig.
Hi.
Ms. Diaz.
Hi.
Mr. Garcia Malina.
Hi.
Mr. Soto.
Hi.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Hi. All right, that brings us to our second public comment period reserved for, pardon me, items not addressed on the agenda. If you would like to make a public comment, you can go ahead and tap the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Your comments must, of course, be less than three minutes. See, we have one already. Ms. Strazo, please add Mr. Dastre to the meeting.
How'd you know it was me? Tony Dastre, 700 block of New Holland Avenue. So based off what Mr. Esch said earlier, it seems to me that the logical step forward in increasing capacity for affordable housing would be to, we need to finally get rid of parking minimums. I, I hate them. I loathe them even. I think that we need to spur more development around here that's going to be transit oriented. Every time I see a project that allocates space for parking, I understand why. And I understand our society is very reliant on vehicles, but we need to be a leader. It, it's time to, i- if we're, if we are trying to expedite the amount of housing that we're able to build in such a small area, based off what Mr. Esch said, it seems like he was able to fit 21 units in the building. He, he scaled up from 17 to 14 to 21. So potentially 21 units could have been generated if the parking wasn't an issue for him. I still don't know that I would necessarily agree with the project for other premises, but parking minimums have to go. If we're trying to loosen things up in some regards so that we can build more housing, this just seems like the logical step here. We need to increase what people are able to do with their properties to fit more housing properties. I mean, I live over here on the northeast side of town. I've lived in the same house I grew up in, and I can say that parking's not an issue over here. But I also live in a very, I live in a R2 zone. So I'm next door to a R3 zone. The, the density around here, parking has never been an issue. In fact, my family is, because my dad's a mechanic, I would say we've always had more cars than we needed. I grew up in this car centric, car laden society. I grew, like literally grew up in it. And as much as I love my cars, I think it's time that we got away from this. And if getting rid of parking minimums is within city council's power, I think we need to do that expediently and quickly, especially as we see development projects. I believe there's 35 plus projects going on right now, as per information I've heard at council in the last couple of months. And I can only imagine how much denser some of these projects could be if we loosen things up on the parking regard, knowing that we are going to be taking strides forward for public transit in the future so that, yeah, it, it might be a short term issue for people moving into areas or moving around areas, and we're not entirely sure where all the cars are going to go. But if we start planning these things, recognizing that the goal is to get rid of this, what I would say is a liability for many people because it's such a depreciating asset. It, it's time for parking minimums to go. So if city council can act on that in the near future, I would encourage you to do so. It does seem necessary. Thank you for your time. See you guys in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Dastre, as always. Do we have any other public comments? All right. Hearing and seeing none, that would bring us to the report of the mayor. But I've been informed that the mayor will not be making a report this evening, and I have no report for you, which brings us to council comments.
Yes, Mr. President, may I? Okay. I just want to say that this month is also Stroke Awareness Month. And I just wanted to send a shout out to the nurse Mosley, who is the Director of Neurology. And of course, I wanted to show you my T-shirt, which has been hanging here. And it is call fast. If you see anybody that is having any kind of symptoms, please call 911. It does save a life and the brain. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Diaz. Other council comments? Okay, in that case, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Please have a good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
God bless all.